1.1 on the order of open session. Open session on July 16, 2025. The government board this evening has called for order at 4:45 p.m. 1.2 public engagement concerning items on closed session agenda. All members of the public would be requested to address the government board regarding items on closed session agenda. If there is not, will 1.3 determine if closed session will be opened. Will we do closed session in consideration of all matters? As you can see, one matter, government closed session at 5:49 by 7:00. I will act as the session adjutant. One matter as it passes, identified on the agenda. As you can see, this is a 3.2 government closed session. One matter as identified on the agenda. The board will now turn into closed session at 4:46 p.m. All right, we are back. We are at 3.1, meeting open session. The meeting actually, legislative body of CFP number 95.1 and CFP number 99.1. Meeting open session at 5:47 p.m. By law, more policy and less no rights meetings may be recorded. By law, more policy and member of the public address the board on any items on agenda or any non agenda items. The public must present any requests to the board. Therefore, I ask you to kindly submit your speaker slips at this time and help start another meeting. Speaker slips for non agenda items, you can turn in prior to item 4.2. Hearing of the public regarding non agenda items. If they recognize and qualify for voting at that time, you have three minutes to address the government board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, the speaker slips can be turned in by item 5. Hearing of the public regarding agenda items. If they recognize and qualify for voting when your request of agenda item comes up. You have three minutes to address their board. 3.2 report of actions taken in closed session. Unanimous vote of 5 to 0. The board took action to accept the findings of the independent committee of safety here. And offers the board president to issue decision consisting of those findings. By the following. 3.3 open meetings and welcome.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands in its foundation under God, in whose support the world is just as strong.
3.4 approval of agenda, motion for agenda. Sir second? All in favor? Ayes. 3.5 call for order meeting of legislative body of CFP number 95.1. Call for order meeting of legislative body of CFP number 95.1 at 5:49 p.m. 3.6 for approval agenda for meeting of legislative body of CFP number 95.1. Is there motion to approve the agenda? Sir second? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passed unanimously. 3.7 for approval minutes of July 24, 2024, CFP number 95.1 meeting. Is there motion to approve those meeting? Approve the minutes. Aye. Sir second? All those in favor? Aye. One extension. Sounds good. Will pass this order 0, one extension. Order. 3.8 for approval resolution number CFP 95.102. Resolution of the board trustees of the Delmar Hills School District acting as a legislative body of Community Facilities District 95.1. Determining adjustments in special tax rate for such community facilities district fiscal year 2025-2026. And Mr. Bill, and you're over there. As we introduce Doug Floyd and Javier and the, I don't know. Good folks. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So President Moss, this evening it is my pleasure to introduce Doug Floyd as vice president and Javier and the others. Who's been in the industry for probably over a couple of years. They are CFP consultants and they will be able to share our evidence. So that I will be studying.
And there are two resolutions. One resolution approving the rates and allowing us to let the taxes be counted as bigger. And the second resolution approving the budget for this week's. There is an annual report attached to the items which provides the budget and the tax rates that are viewed. Based on, actually it's last year, there is no change course with the 95.1 that was in the 95.1. There was one component committed for fiscal year. So the taxes were not $5,000, $600. Any questions?
Questions? All right. If there are key words, this number accepting. The resolution number CFP 95.102. Is there motion to approve that resolution?
Aye.
Sir second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passed unanimously. 3.9 for approval resolution. For approval of resolution number 95.103. Resolution for board trustees of Delmar Hills School District acting as legislative body of Community Facilities District 95.1. Establishing budget for fiscal year 2025-2026 directing levy and special tax taking for related actions. And I believe there's any additional. So is there motion to approve resolution number CFP 95.103?
Aye.
Sir second?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion passed unanimously. 310 word approval adjournment of the meeting of legislative body of CFP number 95.1. Now we have the most, move to adjourn this meeting. All right, sir second?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Meeting is adjourned at 5:53 p.m. And now go to 311, call the order meeting of legislative body of CFP number 99.1. And I'd like to call the order meeting of legislative body of CFP 99.1 at 5:54 p.m. 312, word approval agenda for the meeting of legislative body of CFP 99.1. Is there motion to approve agenda? All right, sir second?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. 313, word approval minutes of July 24, 2024, CFP number 99.1 meeting. Is there motion to approve those minutes?
Aye.
Sir second? All those in favor? Aye. Any extensions?
One.
Okay, sounds like there was a 4.0. Okay. 4.0 yes, and one extension. 3.14, 314, for approval of resolution number CFP 99.68. Resolution of the board trustees of Delmar Hills School District acting as legislative body of Community Facilities District 99.1. Determining adjustments in special tax rates for such community facilities districts for fiscal year 2025-2026. And unless there's anything additional?
Aye.
Okay. Unless there's any additional presentation. Is there motion to approve resolution number CFP 99.68?
Aye.
Sir second?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion passed unanimously. 315, for approval of resolution number CFP 99.69. Resolution of the board trustee of the Delmar Hills School District acting as legislative body of Community Facilities District number 99.1. Establishing a budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Directing levy and special tax and taking for related actions. Is there motion to approve resolution number CFP 99.69? Sir second?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passed unanimously. And 316, adjournment of meeting of legislative body of CFP number 99.1. I believe that's 316, sorry. And is there motion to adjourn meeting?
For moving on, thank you again for all of our work over the years. We see you all the time in the block of our finances. So thanks for that. And that I would be a good review.
Yes. Thank you. Our pleasure. Thank you. Second, and all of the favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned at 5:56. Thank you very much. And yes, second what Alan said, we appreciate all the work that you've done. Thank you for being an straight person.
Of course, very well written.
Yes, thank you. Yes, yeah. And all the information you gave. Great. I think that's it. Thank you very much. And we are at 4.14 months.
Good evening, Mr. Grandhead. This has not received correspondence for report for this month.
4.2 hearing of the public regarding non agenda items. Now all members of the public would request to address the government board. The hearing attendants are not on the agenda. Members of the public would like to address the government board regarding non agenda item. Most complete of the speaker at this time. Speaker slip at this time. Is there a public interlocutor? And there is not. So it will lead to five reports recognition of the hearings. 5.1 board reports from our government board members. And I'll start over the end. You start.
Good evening, everyone. Privileged to be with you all tonight. I had the pleasure and privilege of visiting E S Y this summer over a similar age. On the first day at 10 o'clock, I didn't know it was the first day. So I apologize immensely to them, but it was a well-oiled machine. Two hours into the school day. And then talking to Claire and I had the pleasure yesterday of visiting E S Y again. Special ed is very close to my heart. I was the special ed principal in Delmar for five years. So I really enjoyed visiting that. And I also visited Delmar Hills realization. That was a great experience to see it from early beginnings to where it is right now. And they've done such a great job. Looking forward to the opening and the kids coming back and having a great time. But enough about me. This is about Dr. McClure. Ten truths about Dr. McClure. She made a positive and lasting difference here in the district. Her leadership was anchored with credibility. Her personal values regarding education drove her unwavering commitment towards educational excellence. Holly's focus on the future set her leadership apart from other leaders. Holly understood greatness isn't accomplished alone. She built a great leadership team. Holly led number six. Holly led through the lens of trust, respect and collaboration. Number seven, when Holly was challenged, she did not crumble. Challenge is the principle of greatness. Quote. Number eight, Holly led by example. Number nine, Holly was the best leader because she was the best learner. And number ten, Holly understood that great leaders lead with the heart in mind first. Because if you haven't captured them here, you can't capture them there. Thank you for your leadership.
Happy summer. Hope that you enjoy your summer. I was able to attend a site visit with Mr. John O'Conde. And it was really great to see Delmar Hills almost complete. I know that my kids are very excited to start new schooling there. And I'm here in instruction very early in the morning. I know it's happening all the time in the weekend, so I know that they're not at work and it'll be completed soon. So that's why I want to visit this month. And Holly, I just wish you all the best. I know that you're going to have, you're a lifelong learner. And you have a whole new, many new chapters in front of you. And you have so much fun and do all kinds of amazing things that, you know, you haven't had the time to do. This is an all-consuming job, you know, trying hard and studying. So it's been a real treat to work with you these past six years. And it's a real leadership style. And yeah, I just wish you all the best for you and family and all the years ahead. And hope to come back.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's hard to believe that earlier this last month, we sat down and talked to some people who take the seat of Holly. Who has been on the board almost as long as me. And so it's hard to think about having somebody who fills better than I can. I know that you wanted to be great at everything and wonderful things in your life. And I know this isn't, this isn't goodbye for you and I. I hope that you remain in touch and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
I sat here thinking that maybe if I just pretended it's not happening, I don't think that's the only. Anyway, I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're enjoying your summer. I had only two events and they were last week. One was a very happy one. One was a very sad one. Very happy one was going to show Delmar Hills Academy and see the transformation. And you think of it in two perspectives. One is having been in a building for many, many years and we used to have our quarterly meetings and just be on campus. And then just seeing where it is now, but also the evolution that we've seen. Thank you, Chris, for allowing us to see it evolve and just the pride that everybody has in the effort that's been done. So that was a great day. The day before that was a very sad day because it was my last one-on-one meeting with Holly. And for those of you who don't know, I've known Holly as part of the governance team since 2012. And I was a new board member. You were relatively new as a superintendent relative to now. And what I learned to appreciate, and it's so important, is the strength of governance. So Holly has so many different roles as leader of the whole organization, but also as one of the six members of the governance team. And without a good superintendent in the hub, this doesn't work. This can't work. And there's a special skill in understanding how to navigate the communication to bring items for action. And put in an efficient way that's helpful for us as a governance team to make good decisions for the community. But also for the staff in terms of understanding what strengths you all bring to the table. And once an agenda item ready for action and when it's not. And really making the best decisions. We couldn't do it without you. We couldn't do it without Holly shoveling that process. It's so underestimated. And when I talk to other board members around California, but also in other countries and other parts of the country. They are not good governancees and we do it. The other thing that Holly has done, though you mentioned it's about learning and teaching that's core. You learn out of being a great teacher and principal and assistant superintendent for a start home. And now a superintendent. And you learn from the best. And now what I've seen in my most recent tenure is other superintendents who look up to you. You're the leader, you're the teacher. So when they have questions of how do I lead my district? How do I lead my governance team? How do I lead my cabinet? It turns to you. You are the teacher, you are the leader. And so it's no surprise that you're recognized recently as superintendent of the year for our district. But we're a little bit missing that. We're going to miss you. And personally, I would have not put my name in the hat to serve again. If it wasn't for you. You are the single reason that I'm doing this. And I learn from you every day. Every time I have ideas and I found some value, we bounce ideas by me. We're working together. And so I'm sad that that was our last one-on-one. But hopefully, because we all live in the same community, I'll have an opportunity to continue learning from you. If I have questions. And thank you so much for what you've done for me. What you've done for us as a governance team, for the district. And most importantly, the thing that's taught behind you pretty every day is the kids. All the kids that walk through the doors of our schools from when you started with this district to now. It's happy tens of thousands, I don't know. I haven't done the amount, but just think the effect you've had on kids who are now adults like my kids. And around there, I'm grateful because I will also thank you all.
I guess no one's seen Holly's last meeting. I don't know if it's clear, but it is. And she'll be partying soon. And I'll get to that before we get there. And I just want to mention that I also visited Delmar Hills visit. And I cannot stay outside. That was incredible. It was, the work was incredible. It's an incredible transformation. Excuse me. We're talking about, kind of seeing how the school evolved operational. Before was much more dark, dingy. And now it has opened up, is bright and cheerful. And it's a great example of what the school district can do, these folks here can do. When given a set constraints, they work within them and do incredible things. It's just, it's really symbolic of the work they can do under thoughtful and attentionality. How, kind of everything I can see, like there's walkways through it that kind of indicate correctionality. Where you're supposed to walk. Whereas before it's kind of get lost in there. It's, like I was saying, it's much more bright. There's natural light everywhere. Even in rooms that weren't changed very much, there's still sunlight coming through the skylines. And so, you know, technically it spaces the scene. You know, it's an incredible project. It's, we're really going to benefit from it. And given, like I said, given the chance that we're given to you, we did an incredible job. They don't really thank Chris. I think the main portion, Chris for doing all having access to it. And those that are doing individual work in classrooms, Allison, Kristen, working on how our classrooms. And it's, you know, you guys have done an incredible job and really appreciate it. Holly, and as mentioned, it's sad to see you go. But your legacy is woven into every corner of this district. From the work that you do at those schools, to the people that you hired, the team that you built here and the work that you did. And it's reflected, the work that they're doing is reflected on the group that you have built together. Incorporated mentor. And, you know, it's, it's going to be, you know, I, these folks that the people you hired, they're known throughout the company. These are really solid, frequent clients. I run into people outside and they know we have a good group of folks that work for us. And that's reflected on you. You know, and the culture that we created here. So it's incredible culture. Everyone I talk to here, this year, this part of incredibly tight group, tight team. Built in a really strong foundation here. A culture that sees excellence. It is always supportive of each other. And that's something that we brought to this district. You know, aside from the culture, people, you know, like they're saying about the schools, the physical transformations. It looks completely different. I mean, you look to the school like 15 years ago. You go to now, you look at what they look like. It's a world of change. And that has all to do with you and the work that you're, you're working. You know, students are having amazing experiences every single day. I walk into those schools and see them with ages collaboration. I mean, they're doing all these things that what we want education to be, what we want students to learn, to do it. That is your vision. It's not like just us two people. There's also coming to visit, to recreate this team. You know, we're more than, we're crazy. And we get it, we're schools, we're everything. And then you have people coming from all over the country coming to learn. And they learn from us, the things that have just been done here. So I mean, lots of things are being done, right? And, you know, and most importantly, like Alan said, you legalize the legacy for thousands of kids. You know, all of your vision and leadership. So, you know, thank you from out of my heart. Thank you so much. Thank you for all the work that you've put in and all the work that you've done. Thank you so much. And I'll allow it. It's 5.2 board reports for the 10th. I'm assuming it's your answer.
It's really complex to hear all of that.
I started teaching in 1987. I think I'm a little true. But after that, I didn't have a big influence. I knew I loved kids. And from day one, I knew that's the one. And then I found out I loved other people who love kids. And there was this whole world of education and conversations you could have about doing really good things for kids. And I've been very blessed over the years to work with the best of the best. And this governance team is incredible. And to be able to be in a position to make decisions that are really good for children. And to be able to create an environment like we have where people are rewarded for being thinkers. And for really caring about what's best for kids. And for being brave, to do the right thing for kids. And to come up with ideas and to share with each other and to de-privatize their own teaching and learning. It's really exceptional to be truly among this governance team who allows us to do both that kind of wonderful work for children. And over time, as I said, you know, way back then, you know, in my early twenties in Yuma, Arizona. You know, bright, very bright, with, you know, excitement and all of those things. Just, if I would have known what the years, how the years would unfold and how we would end up where we are. How we'd be surrounded by this incredible talent. And truly, as I think about it, and I think about what's the most exciting part is. And you mentioned it, Bill, just being, all of us being learners and always knowing that there's more to know. And there's more to learn and being curious about what are other people thinking? Where are you coming from? Getting work with lots of different kinds of people in the community and knowing that they're trusting us with what's most important to them, which is their children. And then having the different perspectives of the board and being able to put all of those pieces together. And then having the different perspectives of the board and being able to put all of those pieces together and move together and make the right decision through some of the most challenging times, whether it's, you know, how, what does the community in the neighborhood school, what does that look like? How does that feel? What's important to everybody? How do we create the very best school we can for kids? And I can tell you, the biggest thing over time, as you were talking about it, maybe you realize how much I've been transformed and how much I've learned. As I think back to those first days, I never could have imagined how much I would learn and grow and how we've all together with you, work with all of you. And most importantly, you obviously work with my wonderful colleagues and our kids. Everywhere has wonderful kids and we have the most amazing special district. And it's really fun to be a part of their lives in all the different ways I have a chance to do that. So thanks for allowing you to learn and grow right alongside everybody else and encouraging us to be courageous and always do the right, do the right thing for kids, which is not always the easiest thing, and I appreciate that. And I know more than anything, I feel great about the timing because the district's in great hands. We're at such a good place, as all of you have talked about, with our relationships and with our, what we're doing for children and what our schools look like and our community and our wonderful neighborhood schools, it's amazing team. Our leadership at every school site, the teachers that are truly far and the best anywhere. The most amazing professional learning, I'm going to go on and on. So it's in great hands because of the team. We'll all still be here, I'm the only one retiring, that's the new. So thank you, and thanks again just for being a great governance team. And just couldn't have imagined, like I said, way back then, that it would have pulled it as I did. Love yous, I have some. Been very bitter to me, I will miss all of you more than you'll ever know. I just wanted to begin to tell you, so, so thank you. And yes, I still live in the home of the team, it is supportive, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We are moving to 5.3. I want to guess when, really fast quickly, I was just going to say before that just the further public point link there, as you said, Holly, we're going to do this slide. We're continuing our declarations with regards to the official hiring purpose for Centennial. That's going to be tomorrow's schedule, so hopefully that'll be wrapped up soon. And it's possibly in place, hopefully by the, hopefully by August, I wish. Thank you. 5.3, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. For anyone who would like to address the government board on a particular agenda item, you're simply going to turn this on, I'll open the requested agenda item. So I'll drop you a question for you. 5.4, we're four minutes for the June 16, 2025, June 17, 2025, June 18, 2025 meetings. There are actually just three minutes. I, of course, pass the hands. And we are setting agenda 6.11, 6.14. Would anybody like to pull anything out? 6.6, anything else? Okay, and is there a motion approved for anything minus 6.6? Is there a second? All the different, how about I? Of course, pass the hands, we can all go at 6.6.
I'd love to hear a bit more about 6.6, the contact for District 22.
So this is a program, Jamie Phillips actually mentioned a little bit about it last month's presentation. And so we're able to create farmers market nutrition and education to each of our school sites. So it'll be off to school sites, it's a program that needs to run at previous districts and it's a fantastic opportunity for students to be able to learn more about table school, a function of table food and ready breaks for our school sets. So each member of our school will have an opportunity to do this.
And I can concur, this is a fabulous program. As the principal and Vista, I was a foray to that every single year. And the kids, when the farmer comes and sets all of the clothes up and they get their little bucks in their hand and go shopping for their family, they just have, it's mind-blowing. And it just changes the world. It feels so important, so important, it teaches about nutrition and health and it's a fabulous program.
We're really excited to bring it on, we've done things at different sites where gardens, our CNS team even took a plant that they have outside and have raised their own vegetables. So really looking at any opportunity we have, we can not only bring fresh food to students, but also raise some educational.
Is it the same program that, is it? Oh, great, so it's going to be like?
Yeah, I believe a portion of the proceeds that they receive, they actually donate that to nonprofits in the northern area, if I remember. I don't know off the top of my head, but that may be a goal.
Second, thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve 6.6? Is there a second? Oh, okay. I, and we are, oh, we're down to April, my third patient, and goes, what's our report?
Good evening, board, President Ma, board members, Dr. Clark, Cabinet. Tonight, I'm excited to share information with you about our first district annual scorecard. In partnership with Elder Centered Collaborative, we are developing a scorecard that helps to measure our strategic plan annually. And tonight, I would share information related to that scorecard with you. Okay, so tonight's agenda, really, our entire presentation again, it's about measuring what matters in our school district and that plays our strategic plan and the components of our strategic plan. As we begin year three of this plan, I'm going to reflect on last year's year two, the success metrics that we identified and the measures that we used to measure each component of our strategic plan, our Portrional Learner and each deeper. And I'll report out on our progress in those areas. Please, your questions. So the first component of our strategic plan is our Portrional Learner. And our Portrional Learner articulates our community's aspirations for all students and identifies the skills, competencies, and mindset students need for success in a rapidly changing world. Last school year's goals related to our Portrional Learner was for each classroom teacher to teach two of our committee-developed lessons. And so when we were, when we surveyed our teachers to check in on those lessons, 70% of classroom teachers reported teaching two lessons and 93% of teachers taught at least one lesson related to one of the competencies that were developed by our committee. Another objective was to create progressions for each Portrional Learner competency.
Yes, of course. We're asking for, I was. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so as I was mentioning, the first part of our strategic plan is related to our Portrional Learner. And one of the goals in Portrional Learner last school year was for our teachers to teach some of the lessons that our Portrional Learner committee developed for the recruits in classrooms. And 70% of classroom teachers reported teaching two lessons and 93% of classroom teachers taught at least one lesson that our committee developed. Another objective related to Portrional Learner was for our committee to create progressions for each Portrional Learner competency, which our committee accomplished. The progressions shown on the scorecard is one example and it shares a profile of a learner related to depth of knowledge. These progressions break down the skills and performance indicators that K6 students need for each competency in student friendly I-10 statements. So I want to show you an example of that because I know it's hard to see on screen. Guys. Yeah, so one of the good things about this scorecard is after our board meeting, it will be posted on our website for the community to see also. And it's multi-dimensional, so you can click on things and it will bring up other windows for you.
Do you know where you can find it, like on the website or would it be?
It will be under where our strategic plan is on the website, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Sure, so I wanted to show you one example of the progressions that our committee developed. This one again is related to depth of knowledge. And it artic, it identifies what the competency is, it gives a competency description. It labels the specific skills within that competency that we are looking to build with four students. So for example, when we look at depth of knowledge, their ability to integrate, apply, and communicate learning. And then we break down what that actually looks like for students in friendly I-10 statements in different grade spans. And so these have been developed, these progressions have been developed for each competency for our Portrional Learner. And our goals this school year are to work with teachers to use these three different ways. First, to develop shared language in the classroom and with our students. Also, to involve students in goal-setting and reflection. And then to use these progressions when developing objectives in the classroom. A second goal that we measured were actually our students' reflections on Portrional Learner and where they, what they're thinking is at this point in time related to each competency. So what we have are is student voice and some of the reflections for each of our Portrional Learner competencies. And so future forward, we look for these descriptions from students to build, for their understanding to build over time. But right now, this is a baseline indicator of how students are reflecting K3 and 4.6 on each of these competencies. Okay, so that will be something else that's linked in our scorecard. And the second component of our scorecard measures League One, the learning experience in the Delmar Union School District. League One states that every learner receives equitable access to a strong academic core and high-quality instruction so that students think and learn across disciplines, connect multiple ideas, create new knowledge, and engage in breakthrough thinking. One indicator used to measure academic development for students in grade K6 on our scorecard was the mid-year I-ready results. And so these results show that by mid-year of last school year, 80% of our students are at, were at or above grade level benchmark in English Language Arts and 79% of students were at or above benchmark in mathematics. And again, that's a mid-year data point. Another desired outcome of League One is to create a culture of thinking in which, a culture of thinking which students engage in interdisciplinary learning that demonstrates Portrional Learner competencies, creativity, and collaboration. One way that we accomplish this is through professional learning for staff. And currently, 94% of our staff have participated in Cultures of Thinking seminar and we have 48 Cultures of Thinking fellows. And then the best way to show impact of creating a culture of thinking is in our schools where the learning is happening. We use a self, we use a self-reflective tool to analyze the development of the eight cultural forces. And for the purpose of our scorecard, we created a video to highlight four of the eight cultural forces. Modeling, opportunities, routines, and environment. In the Delmar Union School District, we believe learning is a consequence of thinking and we strive to create platforms where students are empowered to question, create, and engage deeply with the ideas in a community that values every learner's voice. Creating cultures of thinking is the framework we use. Thanks for your patience, sorry if I'm a little clunky. It's a bit big.
Right now, actually.
Might as well see it. In the Delmar Union School District, we believe learning is a consequence of thinking and we strive to create platforms where students are empowered to question, create, and engage deeply with the ideas in a community that values every learner's voice. Creating cultures of thinking is the framework we use to empower learners and deepen understanding and intellectual engagement over role memorization or task completion. This video will highlight four of the eight cultural forces and key indicators that shape our learning communities. The key indicators for these four forces are modeling. Make thinking visible by demonstrating personal curiosity, open-mindedness, risk-taking, and reflection on learning. Opportunities. Design and integrate rich-thinking opportunities focused on significant ideas and connections, moving beyond near task completion. Routines. Effectively select and utilize thinking routines to help students organize, deepen, and discuss their understanding. Environment. Arrange spaces and displays to inspire learning, facilitate interaction, and visibly represent the value placed on thinking and learning. Our educators model what it means to be curious, open-minded, and reflective lifelong learners. We show students how to take intellectual risks, how to consider diverse perspectives, and how to learn from mistakes. Our students also practice and embody these same skills and date the rest through the years. We design learning experiences that spark rich thinking. Opportunities where students don't just opportunities where students don't just complete tasks, but explore ideas, ask questions, and make meaningful connections. With purposely selected thinking routines, we help students organize their thoughts, deepen their understanding, and engage in thoughtful dialogue. These structures support every learner in finding their voice. And we know that our spaces speak. Classes are arranged to inspire learning. Every wall, corner, and display are a reflection of the value placed on thinking, collaboration, and inquiry. When we make thinking visible in ourselves, our instruction, our routines, and our environments, we empower students not just to learn, but to truly understand, reflect, and grow. For Liever 2, Liever 2 focuses on a responsive and caring culture where individuals are respected and valued for their unique contributions and diverse perspectives. There exists a shared commitment to a culture of excellence grounded in empathy, compassion, and a common purpose. A desired outcome for this Liever is that students, staff, and families feel connected to their school community. For students, a goal was to offer leadership and choice lunchtime opportunities, and a hundred percent of our schools were able to offer these for students last school year. We had over ninety-three different opportunities and choice opportunities for students across our school district during lunchtime last year. Another success metric is that ninety-one percent of students in kindergarten through sixth grade report feeling that their teacher cares about them. And seventy-eight percent of students K-6 report feeling that other students care about them, and that is up from three percent last school year. For staff, ninety-seven percent of staff report that there are people in their school that care about them. And for our families, we were able to coordinate and host seventeen district-led events for families to participate in last school year. Liever 3 addresses stewardship of resources. So that relates to aligning human capital, physical resources, and facilities that intentionally support the extraordinary school experience. District priorities in this area include fully funding small class sizes, fully funding STEAM Plus, award language program, and professional learning for all staff. Additionally, an updated facilities master plan will be presented this evening. So in the first area that we measured related to instructional minutes in STEAM Plus, one hundred percent of students in kindergarten through third grade received one hundred and twenty minutes of STEAM Plus a week, and a hundred percent of students in fourth through sixth grade received one hundred and eighty minutes of STEAM Plus a week. Small class sizes are another priority area measured. Ninety-eight point eight percent of students kindergarten through third grade were at twenty-two to one or lower classroom ratio. And in grades of four through six, one hundred percent of students were in a classroom ratio of twenty-seven to one or lower. We do have a contract clause that allows us to increase to twenty-three to one if we have a staff member's child in a class. And that happens on rare occasion, but that's the reason for the ninety-eight point eight percent on our scorecard. Professional learning is also-
Sorry, can I just say there? Because I'm assuming that that was because of our SLIP kindergarten? Which definitely had that ratio.
Correct. So that's true as well. And one and another reason is because we have a clause in our contract that allows us to adjust by one should we be older.
Yeah, but the SLIP kindergarten has, I mean, I don't know, twenty-seven to one?
Twenty-five. We can go up to twenty-five to one, and last year we were in both classrooms.
Yeah, okay.
And then professional learning is also highly valued by staff and families and has a direct relationship to positive student outcomes. And last year, we were able to offer two hundred and fifteen professional learning opportunities for staff. And finally, again, the updated facilities master plan will be brought to you tonight for approval. So right now, there's just a picture of the color of the draft there. And then once that's approved, that will be updated on our scorecard as well. Liever 4 looks at design influence, which states that rich and meaningful learning occurs at the intersection of purposeful, engaging learning, innovative thinking, and a compelling curriculum. The physical environment across all learning spaces supports rich and meaningful learning by influencing how individuals interact, their behaviors, and their engagement in authentic, personal, and collective learning. So one desired outcome that we measured in this Liever was the work of our innovation technologists. This year, we had innovation technologists at six school sites supporting the integration of design thinking, coding, and robotics with grade-level content. Of the schools where our innovation technologists were assigned, nineteen percent of second graders, one hundred percent of third graders, seventy-three percent of fourth graders, and eighty percent of fifth graders, and thirty-eight percent of sixth graders participated in epic build projects. So that's using their little robotics kits in order to relate to classroom learning. This upcoming school year, we look forward to increasing the number of innovation technologists. We know that our students, staff, and community value the learning that occurs as a result of investing in these positions. We also reported on how many common learning spaces and learning studios are modernized this school year, or so far across our district. Forty-four percent of common learning spaces and seventy-two percent of learning studios are currently modernized, and that does not include what's happening this summer. So this summer, we are fully modernizing Delmar Hills, and then we have a whole other cohort six where modernizations are happening at our other school sites as well. And finally, a desired outcome is that our spaces are used at all school sites to include outdoor learning spaces, and that they're actively being used by students throughout the school day. We ask students and staff to report on the frequency of student use for a variety of spaces on campus. We are sharing on our scorecard our student responses. And so ninety-seven percent of students report that they always or often use their learning studio. That ninety-two percent report that they always or often use their STEAM Plus studios. Seventy-one percent always or often use their Innovation Center if they have one. And fifty-six percent of students report that they always or often use indoor learning commons. Forty-seven percent report that they always or often use outdoor learning spaces. And nineteen percent of students report that they always or often use their MWR. Next steps include being able to post our scorecard on the Delaware Union School District website under our strategic plan link. Again, the intention of the scorecard is to articulate the desired outcomes for our Portrait of a Learner and our four Levers. The scorecard allows us to measure what matters most and succinctly share this information with our community. And we are also in the process of finalizing our priority actions for upcoming school year. We have our next design team meeting on September 4th. And once we have the twenty-five, twenty-six school year priority actions finalized, then we'll start to look at what success metrics we will use for our scorecard this year and begin the development of our scorecard to report and share with you again next week. And I do just want to thank Dr. Ricard for always paying the way for us to do great work that we can feel proud of in our scorecard and the streets and the neighborhoods that our strategic plan outlines for the children of our school districts.
Thank you for the hard work and your team to put this together. I have a couple of wonderings. This is such important and great work that focuses on our students. I'm wondering if it should be placed on the bar or on our website?
Sure.
And it's just a wondering. And then the other secondary could be instructional services or and/or the strategic primary. It's such valuable work. I would personally like to see more of this. So I'm wondering, as a last thing, how will our special ed staff incorporate this Portrait of a Learner in their day-to-day operations?
So we have a special education population that's right there. We say all students, all students. And so we can have metrics that I'll share tonight that will allow students to, our questions for accessing education content for students who are primarily access special program. Also, my, for access, yeah, all those are things for all students.
Thank you. All students or ten students first.
That's right. And I'll add one of our goals, and welcome back, is we will be bringing Portrait of a Learner progressions to all staff to include our classified staff and our certified staff, and also our special education instructional aides and teaching staff. And it's included in one of those conversations. They'll look at K-6 as they walk up with a variety of students that are all students.
I just wanted to say, thank you very much, Austin. Thank you for the district that we're doing this. This is a, how we got a request and a foremake and to see that this is the results of what we asked for last year, basically. Because the question was, you know, it's great work there for doing strategic planning and everything, but how can we measure whether or not it's successful? How can we know that it's, you know, if we can see the results of it? And so now you're actually putting together, it's measurable, quantifiable. There are issues that we're building out, and you're able to evaluate them. I think that's impressive every year, and things. But again, it's still really great work in response to the request of the day. And it's done really well, as Bill's mentioning, and I do think that it's something we're proud of. And we stick it more broadly or whatever, and let people know and see that this is the results of these early, you know, we're looking at ourselves and constantly evaluating some of the question. And it's doing really well. So appreciate it. Thank you so much. Questions?
I just, I have a comment. I agree with what I was saying, the question is surprising. And I kind of, as you said, nineteen percent of kids use their MWR.
Correct.
And I just want to take that concept and put it in and you go and see just as far.
That's okay.
Yes, a great work and a lot of work. So I look at the numbers. We've got four Levers. If we look at priority actions from last year, we've got some five-year objectives. And each lever has its own price. We have twenty of those. But under each of those, you have priority actions. So we'll have fifty. So how many of those, when this scorecard gets posted, how many of the fifty will have success measures or measures?
So what we created in this scorecard, we did it with staff and community members in the same room together. Of course, the work was led by our partners and colleagues to help us develop it. And in that process, what we did was we looked at our entire strategic plan to include the leaders, our five-year objectives, and our in-home priority actions. And we really looked to see what are the big pieces? Because we cannot measure, we cannot show at just fifty different things. So what are the big ideas here that we are really looking for? What are our big objectives? And then what are the units that we can use to measure them and show them succinctly? So one thing I do like about the scorecard is that it's one page. It's easy to read. There's graphics. It's dynamic. And so instead of having to look through many different places, it provides one place for people to go to find some important information about our school district. It's not everything. But what I would say is it measures the important components of the goals and objectives for that school year in each of our leaders and our Portrait of a Learner. So the really big important pieces. And then as we look to develop this in our new scorecard, some of those goals and objectives may change every year. So then we might measure new things, and we would show new information. But much of what's in here now, we do look to grow and continue to report on. Obviously, academic success is something that's vital in our school district. So we're always going to report on that. Cultures of thinking and our frameworks, each of our leaders. So we really look to see what are the big themes, the main ideas there, and how can we show what's happening and what's important at the time.
Great. So I appreciate that not everything is measurable or easily measured. So not all fifty will have them. And for those that we intend to have measures, are we measuring? Because I know we couldn't, we asked this early on, where are the measures? And you can't do it overnight, and you should, I hope you get it in place. Do we feel that those priority actions that we intend to measure we're actually measuring and we'll see in the scorecard or some standard development?
We feel that they're measured and that they're reflected in our scorecard. And we feel really proud of what we are able to show in our scorecard. Again, not everything is easily shown through a number. So we really did work around how can we give examples and bring to life some of the things that we're talking about if they're not easily quantifiable by a number? And so we looked to do that work. And so we feel very proud of what's in the scorecard and how it reflects what's important in our strategic plan and what it means for student success in our school district.
So when I go on the website when the scorecard is posted, I'll get to see those areas that are measured and see these examples that you've given?
Exactly. And it will be in one place.
So have we come across any areas where we're measuring? And we certainly expected it would be a little bit better. What do we do in that case? What's the process? Are we going to wait for the next session on September 4th to say, yeah, what do we do with this measure? What's the iteration to say, gee, is nineteen percent? Whether it's Doug's example or something else, maybe that's not what we expected. What's the process for actually examining that measure and say, what can we do better?
Yeah, great question. So obviously, we always set for that high. We look to achieve highly. And in areas where there's still more work to do, we always look to see, okay, what does this data tell us now? And what does it mean for us? So for example, I'm thinking about the possible uses of spaces. And we do want to continue to develop spaces for students to be actively using them throughout our school district to include outdoor spaces. And so if we see that our outdoor spaces really, we'd like to see that number grow and students to be outside learning as well and have access to outdoor learning. The work of our innovation technologists. We wish, you know, a goal would be that every child in our school district can learn with an innovation technologist, and so we work to that end. And so that's where, as a cabinet, we, along with our community and our staff and direction from the board, we really look to see how can we bring that to life for students? And that's where we make plans, and then we look to grow in that area as well. So I am grateful that we can report on an annual basis on some of these metrics so that you can and our community can see with the growth over time.
So I'll give you a really good example where we hit it a hundred percent. The number of STEAM hours or minutes, we hit it a hundred percent. At what point do we go back and say, well, maybe we stretch? You know, have a stretch goal, maybe it's more time. When do we address that? Do we wait for the next five-year plan? Do we wait for the next priority action discussion that we're having in September? When would we have that conversation about what can we do even more of?
Yeah, so first, we would want to maintain that one hundred percent. That would be a goal. And we would want to make sure that any of the decisions that we make are done with, you know, consideration of a variety of factors and together with our community and our staff. And so we can work together to think about what are the areas in which we want to grow? What does our strategic plan say is important? So it will be important to look to see what's in our, you know, what are finalized priority actions? Because of course, those help provide us guidance. So our strategic plan, really bottom line, is the most important thing because it is what we all, all nine schools work in favor of. And so the first step will be to develop really good priority actions for next school year.
And so is that, if someone said, I want to increase the number of STEAM minutes or hours by ten percent, would that be a conversation for the September 4th meeting? Or is it better discussed in a different venue?
Well, it would be something that we would have to be, different considerations we would have to take and look at. One would be our budget, and two would be the impact on instructional minutes for students. Because when we think about where students are spending their time, of course, STEAM plus learning is fantastic. Our kids love it. It's high quality. And we look to provide them opportunities there. And we also need to make sure that they're spending time related to core content, learning to read, mathematics, science, and social studies. And so we look to have about one hundred and fifty. to read, mathematics, science, and social studies, and so we look to have balance there. So, it'd be something that we would have to discuss.
And then finally, for the September fourth meeting, where you, I think that's where you're going with the new priority actions for the next year, I don't expect you're going to say, well, we had fifty before, let's get rid of those and start with fifty new ones. What is your expectation about, you know, how many are we going to continue? And how many more can we either add or substitute? Do you have a sense, is that the goal of that session, is to sort of leverage what we already have as our priority actions, and either modify them or add them? What do you see as a good outcome for that meeting on September fourth?
A good outcome of that meeting on September fourth would be for us to have priority actions that speak to our mission, vision, and belief statements that get us closer to those five-year objectives. So, if we, some of the priority actions that we have from last school year were continued, some would be revised, and some would be new. So, it's not necessarily about the discrete number of priority actions that we have, it's about having priority actions that call out what's most important for us to attend to, and how does that help us get closer to our five-year objectives?
Thank you.
Hi, okay, so, I'm confused. Do we have, is the scorecard in here, if, or not?
So, what I did for the presentation itself was to take screenshots of each section of the scorecard, and then put it on a slide for you. When the scorecard is posted, it will be just one full document with clickable links and things like that.
Okay, so, there's going to be four levers measured on the scorecard, and these are the four levers that are measured?
Correct, so, yeah, the four levers, yes, the four levers.
And then should change the responsibility, carry culture stewardship, resources of design influence.
Yes.
That's where our scorecard is measuring.
Correct, because those are the four levers in our strategic plan, and then also Portional progress.
And Portional learner is part, okay, okay, which is separate, okay. So, is Learner Center Collaborative continuing to partner with us, or, I mean, I guess I'm just not, I'm not feeling satisfied with these measurements. I feel like a lot of this is what we've received in the past. I want to know, like, for example, we use, we rely a lot on cultures of thinking, and I think there's ten components to that, or if I'm wrong?
Eight, eight cultural forces.
Eight, okay. And so, one thing that I've always wondered is, since we rely on that so heavily, if we break down the eight, what do you call them?
Cultural forces.
Cultural forces, how do we know that students are, you know, understanding those forces, that teachers are teaching them, and they're benefiting? I would just, that's where I thought that we were going to get more measurable data. And then Portional learner, which is its own thing, it's so hard to see this, I'm sorry. But you've got, so how, there are how many competencies?
There are six competencies.
Six of those, and will those each be broken out in the scorecard as well?
And they are, so our teachers haven't yet seen the progressions, so what will be linked to the scorecard is an example of what the progressions look like, and the example that will be linked is the depth of knowledge example. The progressions themselves are internal documents, we just want to share them with our teaching staff before they're posted on our website.
Okay, so there's six, sorry, competency, sorry, yeah, right, and then there's eight cultural forces. So, um, so you do say that ninety, I can't, ninety-something percent of teachers taught at least one competency lesson?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three. And then, it was, I don't know, I can't see, so seventy, maybe?
Seventy, something, seventy.
So, that's a great number, that's telling us how many teachers taught a lesson. In fact, you see no indication how that lesson impacted, how those lessons impacted our students, and that's where I'm craving more, to know that we're on the right track with these competencies, that these competencies are, you know, important for our students, and we're teaching in a way that students are receiving benefits of the lesson, so that they are competent in the competency.
Yes.
Which I think you, you are, this, sorry, I can't see very well, it, it, is that touching on that for each of the competencies?
So, one, so what we shared this year were the student reflections.
Okay.
Because that's an indicator to us of how students right now are talking about and reflecting on their understanding of each competency.
And the first example of one competency would be?
Depth of knowledge.
Depth of knowledge, okay. And so, you are asking students to identify in certain way, to reflect, and what does it mean to have a depth of knowledge, or what does it mean to have a learner's mindset, what does it mean to have a liberal citizen? And so, we capture that through student voice, and that is what is shared on a slide deck that will link to our scorecard, and we do hope to see those reflections grow over time.
Because what we do want related to our Portional learner is for students to be able to really think deeply about what the competencies mean, what that means for them at each grade level, what it means that they should be thinking about, and then for them to be reflecting on that through our school year and grow with the skills over time.
Yes, and then, so when we break out each six, each of the six competencies, the header on top?
Yes.
What it is, you know, I just, I wonder, are the teachers teaching, is it like a one done? Like, I checked the box, I taught my lesson on depth of knowledge, I taught a lesson related to depth of knowledge, I just don't know how it would, you know, consistently drop this year.
And so, as we do that work over time with our Portional learner, the progressions will help teachers be able to integrate that language, be able to teach, create objectives with those progressions in mind, and have statements, and help students reflect where they are, their strengths, and then areas in which they need to grow. So, those are, those are actually the three objectives for that school year related to Portional learner, and then we think, how can we measure that, and how can we show that on our scorecard?
So, I can't imagine that the Portional learner, which is a tough one, there's so many components to the scorecard, so just look at number four. These are not standard more classes, I'm imagining some of those.
No.
They're not culturing today.
They're not, but teachers need a starting place, and so, we did create, our committee did create standard more lessons for teachers, so they had something to start with, to use in order to help them make sense with students what each competency means, because the language on our Portional learner, it was written by adults, and so we really wanted to take that and make it into student-friendly language, so students can get home, understand and learn some of that language, and use it as a function.
Yeah, I think it'd be great on the website, we could show that there's different layers as well, like, there's, there's title of it, there's adult language, and then there's student association, and I think we've done it, it became like three levels. Okay. So, question, I know it's great, cultures of thinking, I just, um, this one, I, um, so, this was focused on eye-ready results, right? For people on a face? Yeah, so, I just, I don't make a connection between eye-ready results and cultures of thinking. Again, I think cultures of thinking is almost as scalable as the Portional learner, it's, it needs to be broken down, what are cultural forces, what those are, how they're measured.
So, we have one really close at, to be learning experience holistically, and so we use multiple measurements, or multiple goals within this year, one of those being how our students performing on one benchmark assessment. So, we come with that information, and cultures of thinking really is developed culturally and systemically in our classrooms. And so, again, when we think about how can we share information with our families, we are thinking carefully about how can we do that, you know, for each of the things that help make the learning experience. In addition to the fact that there are other pieces of the learning experience for students that are not shared and indicated on the scorecard too, so we didn't want to make it totally overwhelming, so we look at some important components, and look how we can report information.
So, for the leader two, for responding to that culture, um, I'll just say, for the number seventeen, the number of opportunities for current learning, I think that doesn't use the indication that it's a successful one or the other, or what the success, I think it is, it's just a number of opportunities, I don't, you know, because I mean, a lot of people attended, a lot of people felt the things, the impact of attending, you know, I've heard you say this multiple times, but was there opportunity for people to attend virtually, because they can't get there for a reason, you know, listening, holding their phone, or also being following, you know, those kind of things, that it's not going to be here, if there's successful opportunities, so there's more implementation, measurement of that.
And I would say it's a success that we're able to offer seventeen of them, because when I was looking at scorecards that other, you know, the school districts have created, one of the metrics that they did use is how do they connect with families, and how are families invited in, and the scorecards that I saw, we're much more than seventeen, so we want to grow that number as well, and continue to grow that number, and create that more, and that more.
And then, I want to be touching on the number of seventeen minutes, again, I, so, I'd like to see more indication that those number minutes are, make an impact, like, two students prefer one to actually, or that way, you know, maybe even eliminate one type of scene that's not, maybe enjoying, unless in this case. But just having a number of minutes is not enough information to really to know that students are being actively impacted by the program. You know, one of the number of minutes. And then, the, again, a lot of the strategic resources, professional learning opportunities for our staff, it's kind of the same thing as, as the numbers, opportunities for parents, engagement, it's a number, but are they, are these opportunities enriching our staff? Do they crave more depth? So, I'm hoping for more depth. I know that we've placed a lot of emphasis over time on our learning environment, spaces in the classroom, higher positive and negative things from community and students with regards to that, so, again, I would like a little bit more, I'm wondering, are students enjoying the furnishings, do teachers appreciate them, would you like to see certain changes?
Yeah, and throughout every school year, we collaborate with staff and our students through focus groups, conversations, to get feedback from them, and we adjust in the right, and we're able to support people, and make sure that they are experiencing, they have a positive experience, that things are as good as they can be for our students, for our staff, and for our families. And so, those are the things that we do on an on-goal basis, and make adjustments in the moment as well.
Thank you.
For feelings that cannot extend on September fourth, is there another way that they can participate in this process?
Um, I can think about that, and I'll go back to you, it's a highly collaborative and interactive process, so I'll think about that.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for this whole entire process. The strategic planning process was something that we asked for years ago, and it has been something that has been implemented. We invited people from all throughout this community, stakeholders all over, we're able to participate, it's an open process, and so, like, things that, like, Portional learner, for example, are things that our community values, and these are the things that we thought, hey, these are things that are important. What's really great is, like, I've said this before in multiple prior meetings, walking through the schools, and you actually see that this was implemented into our schools. So, things that we value as community are not just, like, for adults to have this conversation, but it was brought into the classrooms, and, and having kids digest what we think is important for them to learn. And you see that through the exercises that they're doing, through, like, multiple, like, they write it, they write it out, depends on the classroom, like you're saying, depends on class level. So, it's just a really, been a very, I'm thankful for, and grateful for the process that you, that you put into it, and included in everybody, and, and again, it's very responsive, like, what we had asked for. I've been here for, you know, since here, and I appreciate the times that we asked for it, and this is what we're able to answer, that's a comfort for us, so, thank you so much for all of the, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I do want to say, just an excellent, it's an excellent scorecard, and above and beyond what is typically found in a district, because we already have such a robust strategic plan. And if I think about, as I was reflecting on the questions and comments, that those priority actions, which also define annually what we pay attention to, as Allison was saying, then when we take a bigger look out and think, okay, what impact are those having, those actions that we are doing and focusing on each year on that growth toward the five-year objectives, that's what we're trying to communicate over time, is the impact of that. And then, you know, from there, somebody, you know, there, those priority actions are owned within the district, and there are internal ways that we measure these, so this is a nice to have kind of an overall big picture look at, how we can communicate about the impact those priority actions are having, so thanks for the conversation, and great job, very, very well done, it's excellent.
All right, and we are moving to number one, working on facilities update, which is the length of the meeting.
All right, good evening, there's a lot of your stories, yeah, this evening, we have our materials updates, we'll be doing our Dorman Hills Academy's modernization, Ashley Falls School, and Valmar's modernization, and I will, Agent Wolf, kick it off, Dorman Hills.
Thank you, good evening. Just a, we're winding down with the project, it's looking great, we've had a clean, as you guys know, construction's starting June twenty twenty-four, and just going down this list, the roof is, is complete, all the equipment has been tested, balanced, different testing has gone through as far as the air balance, the solar systems are operating, and cleared by SDGD, which is very rare to get that released before a project is a hundred percent complete, so, kudos to the team. On the exterior, landscaping is being worked on, final concrete is being poured, which is at the entryway, asphalt is complete throughout, I'm really happy you guys, most of you got to go visit the site, hopefully the final cleaning was done at the time, and we will go through and do another final cleaning soon as well. Interiors, we're having furniture delivered and built, the principal's been by and very excited to make their home, and as far as technology goes, Wi-Fi's And as far as technology goes, Wi-Fi is up, telephones are in, printers are being delivered at the end of this week. Sam's team has been wonderful in getting everything going, all the technologies up. So we anticipate being completed prior to school start. Going through some pictures, I think the upper left-hand picture serves the building really well. Solar panels installed, up and running, equipment screen installed, all the HVC units are behind that, that screen. You can see all the asphalt patch and as soon as the stuff, the asphalt appears, we will do a slurry seal, which will make it all in uniform. The upper right-hand picture is early furniture delivery. It's just kind of scattered throughout, but it's already been built and is being set in place. Lower right is the flooring for the, the, that's just our resilient flooring. And then the lower left is LDT and the conference carpet, just kind of showing the different colors and designs finishes.
You have some question?
Yes, absolutely.
I toured for the second time and saw so much progress. The planter box at the front entrance, do you know what kind of tree we're in there?
It was changed out.
I'm just a little bit kind of question, sorry.
I don't know the exact.
I have root problems in my backyard, I'm like.
So we did have, there were some trees that were there that had been removed a while back, but we did have the stump sprout, you know, pruned out just for that root intrusion.
The planter box.
The planter boxes will get plants and they should be coming next to. No, I don't believe trees right there because I think it's more of a bush.
Thank you. And the teachers will have access to their classrooms, what, the last week of July?
Yes, yes, they, they should start coming in. We're going to try and get all furniture set, just so that way they have something to set up and rearrange as far as what they want. We're also working diligently on getting their like curriculum and everything brought over from the pack and whatever materials are at Ashley Falls and Damar Hills.
And will the families have any special instructions or new instructions for the first day of school? Will the experience different that either because something's not ready or will ingress, egress be different?
I'm going to say yes, that's probably my favorite, but all that Chris needs to do that.
So we would not anticipate any major difference, but there may be some things with the landscape that still needs to be augmented for a period of time. So we're, we're monitoring that. But as far as ingress and egress, that shouldn't be an issue. We should be able to have entrance to the front of the school, people being able to park and get in. So the general, as a general rule, no, it shouldn't be much of a difference, but there may be some areas that are still being finalized for small pieces, but it, but it's, there's not to be really much of a need work going on in school services.
I was just gonna ask, have the teachers been able to walk it and where their?
We had teachers on in May and there's a lot of excitement. So excitement, they had questions that we were able to answer. I think gave them a flexibility to sort of think about what they'll be doing as they get back. May was just on with Major Sleep, so able to talk to the principal. And then as Alan was asking, the last week of July, which ends on August first, that window is the teachers come back on August fourth. We're, we're aiming for definitely this couple of days that we really be able to get teachers on, so they have a little bit of extra time to be able to feel comfortable and get to their classrooms. So giving the furniture set first, then giving things delivered and being able to set them up. So we'll, next week, I think have a better feel for what's the date of the party, the line we'll get, let's communicate that through.
Awesome, yeah, I think they'll be really excited.
Yeah, me too. So as we move into the couple of modernizations that we are planning for, Ashley Falls School, we're really in a process where in, in the summer, still looking at some of the feedback that we've gotten from the community, working on some of the initial plans and setting stage for some community meetings that we'll be holding in August, September as we get back to meet with both staff and, and communities who follow on that process. Still just some of the information and images from that first community meeting we held in May. And so we look forward to getting to be in the process to get back into school at the, you know, so we'll be able to get the data soon after school starts and be able to set the stage for that. So we can come on the Mars modernization. We do have five classroom modernizations going on this summer. We also have classroom modernizations that actually follow. I'm planning some going to Carmel Del Mar as well. And as we shared last month, we'll be doing a little more in point gathering in August and be able to take some next steps and provide some recommendations to the board as we get into the August, September working to move forward and continue the process of coming along. Got any questions?
Can I just quickly ask, Chris, I know that we received some questions about the past day at Carmel Del Mar, and I believe that you had some discussions with the, you know, fire department or something on that.
And so we've got some further, really California Building Code is what it takes. And so there are two numbers that you use, one is standing room only, which is five square feet per person. And then another is with chairs that are attached to the floor, which is seven square feet per person. So we are putting together signage and we'll make sure we have signage in. The formal signage isn't in, that we are wondering, then we'll have a temporary signage that'll be up on the wall instead of school.
Did it kind of have any discussions about the number or the labor with regards to what that actual capacity is?
So the number is three hundred and sixty for the standing room only, and it's about two hundred and fifty-three for the chairs. And so we'll be able to put that number out. It's based on California Building Code, it's a combination of what is going on there and how many exits you have. So we've been working with our team to be able to make sure we have the correct information based on.
And I know that you probably, I, I believe that you need to receive some number somewhere that I, you know, and I don't know that you.
That number was brought up in the May boarding, it's fifteen. That is for, it doesn't apply to this situation. So there is a fifteen feet per, square feet per person, but it is not for any U R in school. There's, there's a whole like sheet of different areas that have different square footage requirements.
Basically, my, my concern is that community members are concerned about their kids and they have raised that to us saying that we're putting their kids in danger. And I just want, with that to rest, that that's not exactly the case, for whatever reason, it sounds like their number was, it's a different number. And you spoke with, or you have received, and that, that will be the number that's actually posted on there.
Now, I also will say that the other, I think, important thing is that we are looking at what is that capacity number and ensuring that whether it is our school events or after school events comply with that number. So I think that that's the other step is making sure that we not only have a number posted, we're also reinforcing that this is the number that we can fit into the space and we can't have events that include more than that. So if there are more that are going to be in here and may have seats, then we can't go over the two hundred and fifty number, then that is the number that we can have and that's the number available. So I think it's a combination of posting and then reinforcing and ensuring that we are not going over the number that is, that is the capacity number for the space.
Yeah, I agree, I appreciate that information. Thank you.
In front of Carmel Del Mar to the left of where Adam and her, a tree has been taken out. Are you doing something with that area?
I, it has to do with the whole, they are doing some work on the laptop that will start next week that is part of the whole park modernization. So laptop in that area is owned by the city. And so there's a period of time where that will be closed down, twenty first to the twenty eighth is they're doing some, so I'm assuming that that is combined with that work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, appreciate it. Thank you so much. We are at nine one two board approval, facilities master plan update.
Good evening, again. Here tonight to share an update on the facilities master plan. This is built off of the twenty eighteen facilities master plan update that was completed and approved by the board in twenty eighteen. And we have, as you know, done a number of governing, board workshops, collaboration, discussions over the last, really last school year and into the previous school year before. And so this update, once approved by the board, not only updates of facilities master plan or planning in the own district, but also allows us to apply state funding associated proposition two to the past November of twenty twenty four. There are a number of requirements around facilities master plans and board approved master plans that are part of applying to that state funding. Something that we're doing right now around both Pacific Sky School and Damar High School. So as we look at facilities master plan updates, it includes updates to our strategic plan. The last facilities master plan was completed during District Plan twenty twenty two, so references to Destination twenty twenty eight. We've done some updates around completed projects. We've done updates related to our project cost estimates, similar to the work that we've done throughout the budget workshops with the board. Capacity update was also shared through that budget workshop process. And then there are a number of addendums that comply with Proposition Two. So there are six addendums, five of them are requirements for that Proposition Two funding. So Destination twenty eight is an update, we see that on the left side. I've just pulled out a number of pages, the document is somewhere around a hundred pages in total, and so pulling out these to highlight. On the right side, we've done site updates. At our twenty eighteen facilities master plan, we had a potential to specific kinds of ranch school, so getting us to the nine schools, the neighborhood schools that were prioritized in the last facility master plan process. As we look at future projects, projects that have not been completed, they remain unchanged. So we looked at the scope that was identified and shared in the twenty eighteen facilities master plan and as part of the measuring and process, we thought it was important to keep that scope and keep that information present as we're going through the, the projects at all schools other than Damar Hills, Damar Heights and Pacific Sky. And then we updated Damar Hills, Damar Heights and Pacific Sky. Those schools have been completed, so we have a new cover page for them. We have a new page that describes the project itself and lays out where, what that school is supposed to, so a number of classrooms and the information about the school as well. This is a little bit small, but you'll see as we, there's a link in the board item in there that drafts up on the website. This shows the twenty twenty four, twenty five enrollments. And so we did this throughout our budget workshops last year to look at what is the enrollment currently, then looking at what is the future enrollment as we move portables and make adjustments to the school sites. And we compared it to the twenty eighteen facilities master plan and the proposed enrollment, current enrollment and future enrollment. And part of this is important to tell the story around, as the board went through the twenty eighteen facilities master planning and looked at updating. And then as we started doing the facilities work and saw that the enrollment was declining to a certain degree, the direction was to remove portables. And moving portables and not replacing them with permanent buildings leads to a decent number of decrease in, in total capacity at school sites. Because we had thirteen portables at Damar Heights before we did the work there. We have ten at Sage Canyon, we have a number at, we have a couple at Carmel Del Mar, we had a number at Damar Hills. So by removing those portables and not replacing them with permanent structures, it impacts the capacity. And again, gets to the idea of a neighborhood school with threat of district rather than having larger schools and less schools in the district.
And Chris, if I could ask, so this slide is showing what the capacity of that facility can be based on number of classrooms. Versus the actual one, which is in, right, several, I think.
Correct. And so this is really looking at the capacity and it's based on twenty twenty four, twenty five school year. So looking at what we have in the school sites on twenty twenty four, twenty five, and then making adjustments based on when we complete, for example, Sage Canyon, but would be a reduction in total number of classes at the classrooms at the schools, removing portable classrooms from the school site.
What would be helpful for me, not today, but maybe in the future, is the addendum one that is actually in the documents you have on, on the website as the projected enrollment. And it's a really good snapshot by, by grade. I'd be curious to see the cut by, by location as well. So I'm not sure when the right time in our annual cycle to look at enrollment by facility, but that would be great to see is go a little bit deeper on ten and one and not just by grade, but also grade per location.
Yeah, I, and I don't know if you're asking, like, having both of those side, but both of that, the side by side would be really helpful.
And I don't remember in the cycle, whether it's when we talk about enrollment or when we talk about a nice facility master plan work workshop, but where the time, that's a, that would be very.
I'll work with Catherine and I.
And I'll work with Ryan as we look at it. That's, that, that work goes hand in hand with the enrollment and affect into HR institutions. Thank you. Cost estimates are built off of the original and then we, as we shared through our budget workshop process, we escalated costs and made adjustments for the school sites. And so we have at the top, you have the costs for each school and it's escalated to midpoint of construction. So if I zoomed in there, you'd be able to see that we have the current costs and we have the twenty twenty seven midpoint and we have the twenty thirty midpoints. And so using those midpoints in construction, just we did with that twenty eighteen facilities master plan, allows us to look at when we anticipate work being done and looking at that as the budget for those projects. We've also included the surgeries as potential costs with increases for midpoint construction. This is not only something that we've identified as staff, it's something that will be in need over the future and was not both identified or funded through twenty eighteen facilities master plan. It's also come up in our modernization conversation. So it came up in Carmel Del Mar, it's come up at Ashley Falls.
So on that document, if I read it correctly, CDM and Ashley Falls are fully funded based on, was listed on the scope outline for each of those schools?
They're funded based on the budget that, so none, none of our schools were fully funded for the scope in the original facilities master plan. When we first completed the facilities master plan.
Like a wish list.
It was all the need that we had in the district. And when we looked at the total funding we had at the time, we knew that we didn't have the funds for all of them. So there was a classroom through it for the community, we looked at priorities and measures to be planning, and we identified a budget that was around a number of the scope areas that included our classroom organizations, the infrastructure modernizations, play structures. So putting those together and getting us to a budget for each school site that included as much of the scope as we could, that allowed us to spend all of the dollars we had in the twenty eighteen dollars. As we've had, as we've shared through the budget workshop processes, we had some delays and some cost escalations that had come that both were outside of the norm. Damar Heights delays in our allocation, the cost situation we're seeing, we saw inflation coming out of COVID, where typically it's four percent a year and year over year for fifteen, twenty years prior to our facilities master plan. We saw eight, ten and twelve percent on a annual basis. So over the course of time, we were expecting to see a fifteen percent increase, we saw forty percent. So that combination is what led to costs being higher than we would have anticipated for the overall work.
One of the things that I understand is whether which members do you have at Ashley Falls and CDM? CDMs have worked out over the years, but Ashley Falls, I'm not sure.
No, it was twenty fifteen was partial modernization, some of this work done in Carmel Del Mar that was included, some of it in our twenty eighteen facilities master plan.
Really quick to pick back up what Bill was saying, it's like, just that greater, I think that's an important point to make is that, you know, even the original one, I'm looking back on the twenty eighteen one, the bond would not have covered the, the total amount. I mean, the total project cost of what's on that was two hundred and nine, and that's not including the escalation cost, the escalation cost we're talking about, depending on how much is escalation, two thirty, two hundred and thirty-four million, two hundred and seventy-one million. So, and that was back then, now we're, you know, we're still underfunded. So it's a different number now because some of the schools were completed. But that's an important point to make is that it was never going to cover everything. So like this, as Bill was saying, it's a little bit of a wish list, but that needs to be clear to people that it wasn't a hundred percent like this is, everything on this list will be done because it's in fact, that was done. We're talking about nearly, almost like two hundred, or a hundred and fifty billion more than this hundred and six. So yeah, we're looking at a hundred million more.
We're expecting to get fifty, a hundred million dollars beyond what we had for the version. They're in the full circle, that's why we have to pray as I said, one time. One thing that I, this one mentioned and one of the items, but what we're planning to do is we look at the modernizations where we have online modernizations. We've done the bigger projects first, we have online modernizations. Part of the design process that we are planning to do, we ask our architects to do is to, we do the design process, we have the scope that we are laying out and the work we're going to do, and then also looking at what was not, what were we not able to put into that scope and is that continued need? So not only we have the surgeries, but as we start completing some of these design processes, Carmel Del Mar, Ashley Falls, Sage Canyon, and that, there will be items that don't fit in, that still are items that may have a need down the line. So to continue this, it will be a living document over time. And so we'll be updating as we move through these modernizations to add items and work with our architects so we can have a kind of a pre schematic idea of what might that look like. Because there are a couple of thoughts. One of it is, one is around the cost that will be incurred potentially if we have to do that work. The other is space. So if we look at surgeries, a surgery is going to take space. It makes a lot more sense if you can put that into a space we already have, such as a classroom that is underutilized. But that also takes that out of the picture for our potential future use for any other program. So looking at a couple of those needs is something that we're going to be doing as part of our planning process, so that we're not going to plan for the project that is at hand, but looking at next steps and what are the needs so we can update this document as well. And that leads to the last item on this cost estimate is the ASP C D C offices. This is there to look at if we did a ground up build. This is there to look at if we did a ground up build to replace this. That may not be a need. And so we discussed the budget workshop process. Maybe it can be housed within a building. That would also impact the capacity to a certain degree. So we're doing some investigation on that. If we rehouse this in a different space, that would come off this as a potential cost. And as I've shared before, this is a cost that we should incur through the enterprise fund, not through the general fund. Because this is an outside program that is self-funded. So we also have to look at how that is funded. Even modernization work inside classrooms bring us up to the needs of say the E C D C or A S P. Are things that we would look at? How can we fund that through that outside fund that, that it's worth?
I'm looking at the map for CDM. This might be a mistake. Um, the ADA ramp is coming from in between the trees on Carmel Park down to the northwest corner of the parking lot.
So that really was kind of placeholder for, there's a general need that's been expressed. How might we accomplish this? And then it wouldn't be that you can hand out. So whether it was in exactly that location, it would need, certainly need, I mean, you've, many of you have visited Delmar Hills and you see how many switchbacks we have on the Delmar Hills ADA ramp. There would be a lot of switchback to get down that grade because it is a steep grade and you can't go one and two percent for an ADA ramp. It's there. So it, it wouldn't look like just, it's really just by outlines generally where it would likely need to be. And then it would have had to be designed as part of the project.
And now on the east side of the campus, they are doing an ADA ramp over there.
Yes, and that's part of the city project. The city owns that property and, and doing some of the updates to that, uh, to the park area. So as I shared, as part of proposition two, there are a number of items that need to be included in a board approved facilities master plan, including projected enrollments, capital planning budget and funding sources, uh, verification of district assess valuation for maintenance plan, facilities master plan consistency with local control and management, which is basically a statement that says that our facilities master plan is consistent with our ALCAP. And so we have included these items in the draft. Uh, there are two that I've pulled out. Uh, one is the addendum two, which is the capital planning budgets. There are two things to point out in this. One is, these are all the fund sources that we see. Uh, the, uh, funds in here are basically real dollars except for we have a, um, state funding anticipated and we had some anticipated funding, uh, revenue from the CFP. So those are two areas where we have a little over sixteen million dollars we would anticipate. Uh, and we can likely see coming when that state funding comes is the question. Because, uh, we know that Prop two was funding a certain amount of money for modernization and a certain amount of money for reconstruction. The modernization funding is already accounted for. So any modernizations we do future, we have to then confirm a future proposition or monitoring state, state funding. But we are getting in line and we have, uh, possibility for Pacific Sky money and some other money coming our way. All of this to say, this is our best thought on what is our funding that will come this, come our way and how do we spend it, as we talked about, by funding the budgets that have already been, uh, determined for the projects. We laid out, uh, a general cash flow. Uh, this is dependent upon bidding projects and when we can get construction completed. But this is a general cash flow and it illustrates the fact that, uh, we are still about twenty three million dollars short of what, uh, we would need to complete the budgeted projects. That's actually better than when we last talked to you. We have a little bit more in CFP funds than we, uh, had projected at that time. So it's good news. Uh, puts us about eight million dollars ahead. Uh, but it does show us where we run out of money during the Sycamore Ridge, a modernization at this point. And, uh, are still short on that, uh, ocean air completely. However, we also have to note that ocean air will have our classroom learning studios completed and our play structures. And so it doesn't mean that no work is done in schools. We've made sure that we are impacting every school in the district, uh, throughout the years so that we're not waiting in the end and having a school that doesn't have any talent to work.
Just to quickly mention for people that are, uh, interested in this information, it's online. Um, if you find it, uh, the link is in our agenda.
No.
But I believe the page is, uh, it's on the, you can just do outside in the maintenance operation facilities.
Facilities planning. So you got maintenance operations, facilities, facilities planning. And that's where you had our, for our, um, facilities master plan, uh, links and if there.
Yeah, it is. So it's under facilities planning in, under one of the departments. And it's, um, it's in the, the link is in the agenda, which is what I click on to find it. And then it includes our draft, this current draft, which has an addendum in there. And also, uh, our previous, uh, district facilities master plan, which, uh, the one that was ratified, this was current major.
And we'll plan to keep the twenty eighteen facilities master plan up as well for context because we have, it builds upon it as, as we look from the twenty eighteen to the twenty twenty five.
I just want to touch on, I may pull up, uh, addendum two and one other, um, but addendum one, the projected enrollment. So just looking at the numbers, uh, overall current, uh, total current capacity. And then you have in the addendum what our future enrollment for this upcoming school year will be. If you subtract those two numbers, um, we have one thousand three hundred and thirty six open seats. Um, it decreases by a small margin once you get future total capacities of one thousand three hundred and fourteen. Um, assuming that enrollment is the same in future years. Or, you know, it will decline. I don't know. Um, but we are down from last year. And so I just want to highlight that. That's a lot of empty seats. Um, I think, I think, yeah, but those seats would be best filled by students who are eligible transitional kindergarten, all four year olds in our district.
So the other addendum I pulled up is just this addendum. I've already mentioned it now, but, but I wanted to pull it up because additional scope is an area where we will be, uh, doing some work with architects again to make sure that we are looking at future scope as we complete modernizations. So as, as, uh, I shared in this, um, as in mock, uh, shared as well, over the course, we knew that there was scope that wouldn't be able to be completed. We want to make sure that we're tracking that and looking at what the future needs. Because it should be a living document that we have that helps us to do planning for long term for our facilities. And with that, I would like to just take one moment to note that, um, this is building off our twenty eighteen facilities master plan. And, uh, without Dr. McClure's leadership, um, we spent a lot of time in twenty eighteen, uh, working on the facilities master plan and working through the community process and coming to the neighborhood schools, uh, that, that we, that we land on for our facilities master plan. And, uh, it's exceptionally gratifying to look at what we've been able to do over the last seven years. And so this has been spoken to you before, but really what we've been able to accomplish when we look at, in twenty eighteen, we weren't sure if we were going to go out for a month. We weren't sure if we would have A schools or high schools. We weren't sure what it would look like. And now we have, uh, a couple of brand new schools. We have a modernized school that's going to look brand new. We have modernizations at other schools where classrooms have, uh, have been transformed into learning studios and students are learning in a modern manner. It's all because of us being able to not only chart the path of our facilities, but to have them start our program to come together. So it's pretty exciting to see what we're going to be able to do over the last seven years in facilities master plan and facilities. Thank you. So if you have any questions, then you have to answer in the others. And then we would request approval, uh, because again, this will help us with, uh, not help us. This will allow us to apply for state funding, uh, through, uh, proposition two, uh, which we still do have money on the table for reconstruction in Pacific Sky, which is likely the largest pot that we can be able to get because there's some reimbursement for the land ups.
I just quickly wanted to say, you know, to take it back what you were saying, Chris. It's been an incredible journey, like to see I was, you know, that's when I started showing up and doing things. Um, and to see all the work that has gone into it and the work that was put in just to create the facilities master plan the first time. And there's not really, it's, that's a lot of work that goes into that. And, and, uh, I understand just the amount of time that dedicated that and the vision and the, you know, the leadership required for that to go. So I appreciate all that work. Thank you for that taking us on the journey and, and we're getting to the point where now we're updating it. Um, so it's, uh, it's been a good ride. So thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'll ask, uh, is there a motion approved, the facilities master plan?
So, Dave.
So is there a second?
Second.
All the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So thank you so much. All right, I think that's all. So we're going to be on a schedule, monthly, in March with August. And then we're going to twelve point two, adjourned into closed session. The board is going to be in closed session. So the following matters, thirteen point one, conference with labor negotiator, government vote section five four nine five seven point six. One matter as is identified on the agenda, thirteen point two, conference with labor negotiator, government vote section five four nine five seven point six. One matter is, is identified on the agenda, thirteen point three, conference state negotiator, government vote section five four nine five seven point six. One matter as is identified on the agenda. And thirteen point four, conference later negotiator, government vote section five four nine five seven point six. One matter as is identified on the agenda. Oh, with that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it eyes that we can only get, um, enrollment updates? And you're left on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, right. Let's see if you have that. No, it's me. All right. And let's, 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 let's close that. Thank you, everyone.
Where do we get the addendum one? Can we get the addendum one? The enrollment, can we get the enrollment figures that you saw? It's, they're not, it's under the button. I can't find it.
It's in a paragraph. It's in a little, one number in a paragraph.
What's that? It's not for the, it's for, it's for all your songs. I can't even get into it.
All right, we all good, everybody?
Yes, yep.
All right, let's read me an open session. All right, fourteen point one, read me an open session, uh, at eight forty four P M. Record of action taken in closed session. Uh, okay, bear with me. Government board met in closed session and, uh, let's see. Actually, I guess we'll, we'll go to fourteen one three first. So it's, we've met closed session, fourteen point three, board approval, approval of the employment agreement for assistant superintendent of business services. The assistant superintendent of business services, uh, Brown Act was amended effective January first, twenty seventeen to require the government board prior to taking final action on the employment agreement to orally report a summary of the recommendation for this salary, salary schedule and compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for local agency executives. The assistant superintendent of business services is a local agency executive, executive and a proposed contract amendment is before us this evening. Proposed agreement is for a four year period expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty nine. The agreement also states that the assistant superintendent of business services will receive an annual salary of two hundred thirty one thousand three hundred eighty dollars for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. The assistant superintendent of business services is eligible to receive a stipend of five thousand dollars for each earned doctoral degree if applicable. In addition, the assistant superintendent of business services will receive the health and welfare benefits, which are provided to the district's management employees at annual cost of district of fifteen thousand dollars. Other fringe benefits included within the assistant superintendent of business services agreement include twelve sick days, twenty five vacation days per year, longevity stipends, if applicable, eligible that are available to other similarly situated employees and reimbursement for travel and actual and necessary expenses while performing day to day duties for the district in accordance with work policy. All right, is there a motion to approve the assistant superintendent of business services employment agreement?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, uh, motion passes four to one. Fourteen point four, board approval, approval of employment agreement for assistant superintendent human resources. The Brown Act was amended effective January first, twenty seventeen to require the government board prior to taking final action on the employment agreement to orally report a summary of the recommendation for the salary, salary schedule and compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for local agency executives. The assistant superintendent of human resources is a local agency executive and a proposed contract amendment is before us this evening. The proposed agreement is for a four year period expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty nine. The agreement also states that the assistant superintendent of human resources will receive an annual salary of two hundred twenty five thousand three hundred seventy four dollars for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. The assistant superintendent of human resources is eligible to receive a stipend of five thousand dollars for each earned doctoral degree if applicable. In addition, the assistant superintendent of human resources will receive the health and welfare benefits, which are provided to the district's management employees and the annual cost of district of fifteen thousand dollars. Other fringe benefits included within the assistant superintendent of human resources agreement include twelve sick days, twenty five vacation days per year, longevity stipends if applicable, eligible that are available to other similarly situated employees and reimbursement for travel and actual and necessary expenses while performing day to day duties for the district in accordance with work policy. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the assistant superintendent of human resource employment agreement?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Uh, and motion passes four to one. Fifteen point five, board approval, approval of employment agreement for assistant superintendent instructional services. The Brown Act was amended effective January first, twenty seventeen to require the government board prior to taking final action on employment agreements to orally report a summary of the recommendation for the salaries, salary schedules and compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for local agency executives. The assistant superintendent of instructional services is a local agency executive and a proposed contract amendment is before us this evening. The proposed agreement is for a four year period expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty nine. The agreement also states that the assistant superintendent of instructional services will receive an annual salary of two thousand, or two hundred thousand ten, I'm sorry, two hundred and ten thousand five hundred seventy eight dollars for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. The assistant superintendent of instructional services is eligible to receive a stipend of five thousand dollars for each earned doctoral degree if applicable. In addition, the assistant superintendent of instructional services will receive the health and welfare benefits, which are provided to the district's management employees and annual cost of district of fifteen thousand dollars. Other fringe benefits included within the assistant superintendent of instructional services agreement include twelve sick days, twenty five vacation days per year, longevity stipends if applicable, eligible that are available to other similarly situated employees and reimbursement for travel and actual necessary expenses while performing day to day duties for the district in accordance with work policy. All right, is there a motion to approve the assistant superintendent instructional service employment agreement?
So.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, is there any opposed?
No.
Uh, motion passes four to one. And we are at fourteen point six, board approval, approval of employment agreement or addendum, uh, sorry, board approval, approval of employment agreement addendum for acting interim superintendent. The board has appointed Christopher Del Hankey to serve as intern superintendent beginning Tuesday, July twenty second, twenty twenty five, and continuing until a permanent superintendent has been appointed. In recognition of the fact that he will be doing two jobs, his daily rate of pay will be increased by two hundred and twenty five dollars for the time period he serves in both positions. Is there a motion to approve the employment agreement addendum for acting interim superintendent?
So. There's a lot of seconds.
All right, so you got a little thing, Alan seconds. Uh, is, uh, sorry.
All.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? Okay, uh, motion passes unanimously. And that's correct, all right, motion passes unanimously. All right, and we are at fifteen point one, adjourned meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned at eight fifty P M. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.